Yeah, everyone's here. So, um. Welcome to the, this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, uh, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves a right to limit, uh, the time allotted to public participation, law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending. As required on the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA, ten four six at sequencia, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk, Princeton Packet and the Times on January ninth, two thousand and twenty, uh, one, it was a typo, excuse me, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves a right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy twenty-two thirty recording devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. Uh, public members who wish to make comment at the appropriate time as noted in the agenda or added by the presiding officer shall raise their hand virtually at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Once called upon, the member of the public will be requested to unmute themselves by clicking the mute button at the bottom of the Zoom screen. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools, schools as more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen A thirty-eight eight point one. In the event that this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions. Uh, so I get to run this meeting for a little while here, um, and I wish I had a gavel that I could bang, but I don't. Um, the first off, uh, the results of the annual election at the annual election held on November twenty, uh, November second, two thousand twenty-one. Incumbent board members Brian McDonald, Betsy Calber Baglio and new board member Mara Francheski were elected to a three-year term. So congratulations to all three. Um, we now get to, uh, swear them in, and I'd like to start with, uh, with Mara. It looks like she had some of her family with her, which is excellent. Um, so I'll read and you can repeat after me. I'll try to be slow. Um, I, I Mara Francheski.
I'm Mara Francheski.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Mara Francheski do solemnly swear that.
I Mara Francheski do solemnly swear that.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Excellent. Congratulations. Uh, looks like in order I have Brian McDonald, um, starting his second term on the board. Uh, just repeat after me, Brian. I Brian McDonald do solemnly swear.
I Brian McDonald do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Brian McDonald do solemnly swear that.
I Brian McDonald do solemnly swear that.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially and justly perform.
And I, that I will faithfully, impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. And Betsy, um, Baglio, uh, this is your start of your third term, correct?
It is. It is.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Um, so just repeat after me. I Betsy Calber Baglio do solemnly swear.
I Betsy Calber Baglio do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And then I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I Betsy Calber Baglio do solemnly swear.
I Betsy Calber Baglio do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education.
And that I will faithfully, impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office.
And that I will faithfully, impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Uh, so, uh, we take a roll call, uh.
So Beth, um, got kicked off, so we should look out for her.
Uh-oh. Internet problems. Let's give her a, uh.
I'll ask her if she's coming back.
And she's back.
Sorry, I, I lost my internet.
That is understandable in this day and age. So we'll, we'll take a quick roll call. Um, the Cranberry representative doesn't participate in the election of officers, so that's why Rob's name is not on the initial list. And then we add Rob back in right away. No offense to, uh, Christopher. Uh, Betsy Bag.
I'm taken.
I am here.
Uh, Beth Barron.
I'm here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mara Francheski.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Ryan McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Present.
We have a quorum. So under, uh, parliamentary procedures, the Board of Education acknowledges and accepts the rules of parliamentary procedures for conducting public meetings. Um, I'm temporarily, uh, the chair. Uh, the Board of Education appoints board secretary, uh, myself, Matt Bolden as temporary chair to conduct the election of officers. Um, I understand, uh, that Beth Barron would like to make a nomination for president of the board.
Thank you, Matt. I would. Hang on one second. Um, it's my honor to nominate Daphne Kendall as the next, next president of the Board of Education. I've always admired Daphna's laser focus on students in our care and in particular, um, her unfailing advocacy for those with special needs, as well as other students and families whose voices often go unheard. Over the past six years, Daphna's held numerous board leadership positions, at one point sharing or co-chairing nearly every one of our board committees, including most recently student achievement and negotiations. She's served twice as board vice president. And over the past year, I've had the privilege of partnering with Daphna in board leadership through times of unprecedented challenge and transition. And Daphna's wisdom, her sharp legal mind, her willingness to listen deeply and consider all viewpoints, and most importantly, her big heart, have made it a pleasure to work with her. And she has taught me a great deal about shared leadership and has made us a more effective board to the benefit of PPS students, staff and the wider community. Daphna will bring deep experience, great energy and a collaborative approach to the role of board president, and I enthusiastically submit her name for nomination.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any other nominations?
Do we need a second, Matt?
Uh, yes.
I'd love to second that.
Oops, Alicia, uh, is saying, no, we do not need a second.
Okay.
I'm just looking at your policy. It says a second isn't required.
Well, I'm the second that anyway. I second nomination.
I thought that. Thank you, Alicia.
No problem.
And, uh, I just asked before, there are no other nominations. So, um, let's take a vote. Great, so the motion, uh, the Board of Education, uh, by roll call vote, uh, is to appoint Daphne Kendall to the Office of President of the Princeton Board of Education effective January fourth, two thousand twenty-two until the next organization meeting. Uh, Beth Barron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Ryan McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Francheski.
Yes.
It is unanimous. Congratulations, Daphna.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Matt. Um, thank you, Beth, for that, um, really heartfelt nomination. I really appreciate it. And I'd like to thank my colleagues for their trust and confidence in electing me as the board president. And I would just like to take a moment, um, before we move on to thank Beth for her leadership of this board over the past three years. So thank you, Beth. Um, somewhat unusual, um, if I can, uh, make the nomination for vice president, are we good to go, Matt?
Yes, uh, you are now the presiding officer, correct? Uh, I do not need to conduct the next, uh. Yeah, go ahead, Daphne. You're in charge.
Okay, so, um, Michelle and I, um, we got to know each other, uh, only through board service, and it's another one of those relationships that, uh, would not have blossomed had it not uh, been for us, uh, working together on the board. Uh, Michelle is a tireless advocate for students and equity, and she has the courage of her convictions and maintains them. We have worked well, well together, co-chairing negotiations, as well as working together on personnel and student achievement. I believe she will be invaluable as part of the leadership team, and so I nominate her for vice president.
I'd love to second that one as well, even though it's not required.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay. So, uh, we'll take a vote. Beth Barron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Betsy Baglio.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder.
Yes.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Francheski.
Yes.
Excellent. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, um, for your vote of confidence. Thank you, Daphna, for, um, that wonderful nomination. I'm really looking forward to working with you. We, we do work very well together and, um, I also, um, want to take this opportunity to thank Beth Barron because, as you know, this is my second tour of duty as, um, a vice president, and I know that while the president takes the, the brunt of, uh, the workload, the vice chair is a sounding board and a partner and a supporter and sometimes, um, someone who will challenge your ideas and positions and decisions. And, um, so I'm very honored, um, that Daphna has nominated me and chose me as her partner, and I will do my best to, um, fulfill that duty, um, with integrity and, and honor and to make, continue to make this um, one of the finest school districts in the state of New Jersey. So thank you, guys.
Okay, so, um, just moving on, um, I'd like to, uh, welcome everyone to the meeting. Uh, thank you for joining us and happy new year. I would like to welcome Mara and Rob to the board and to congratulate Betsy and Brian on their reelection. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome Dr. Kathy Foster as interim assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction, and Ms. Rebecca Gold as interim assistant superintendent for human resources. Thank you for joining us. Uh, and then if you just bear with me, um, we're running a school district in a pandemic, and I'd just like to take this opportunity for some thank yous. So first, uh, thank you to Dr. Kelly for her commitment to keeping our schools open. And I would like to thank Mickey Crisafelli for being Carol's right hand in navigating the pandemic um, and keeping our schools open, and I'd like to thank the principals and administrators who, I, we know are juggling so many things to make in-person school happen. And I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Collier. Is Elizabeth here? Um, for her work, uh, she works tirelessly, um, she worked all of her break on communications and other issues to ensure that our community, our school community remains updated as the situation remains quite fluid. And, um, last but not least, I'd like to thank Matt Bolden, uh, for being a team player. Um, Matt was at Littlebrook yesterday for four hours helping with lunch duty. Uh, thank you, Matt. Uh, we're, just one example of why we're lucky to have you. Uh, and then I do have one more, last but not least. Thank you to the teachers and support staff for your professionalism and your commitment to our students. We know that remote learning is not the best situation for most kids, and we understand that we're in the middle of a raging pandemic. And we so appreciate our educators and our support staff that you're here and really working in the best interest of our kids. So thank you very much. Okay, and with that, um, we will move on to, um, our code of ethics training, uh, with Alicia Donella. So Alicia, please.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so we've got, it's six twenty-one now. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to try to get this done as half an hour, okay? You guys, that's, that's sort of the rocket version of this, so that's, uh, that's going to be my goal. Um, Matt, can you enable screen sharing?
Go ahead.
There.
Oops, I was sharing my screen.
No, all right. I got it. I have too many screens here. Okay. Everyone got me now? Okay, ethics for school board members. So what are your duties as school board members as it pertains to the code of ethics? And so let's, let me, let me back up for a second. So, um, school administrators and school board members are subject to, are covered under the School Ethics Act. The School Ethics Act broadly covers, uh, some conflict of interest standards that are applicable to school administrators and school board members. And then there's very specifically the Code of Ethics for school board members, which is what we're going to talk about tonight. Under the administrative code, you guys are required to annually discuss the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for school board members at one of your regularly scheduled meetings. Pretty common to do it during New York. You're required to adopt policies and procedures regarding the training of district board of education members in the Code of Ethics, and then provide documentation that everyone has received and reviewed the Code of Ethics. Um, so Matt, if you have, if you have those acknowledgements, great. If not, I can send one around for everyone to print out and sign and return, and, you know, you can start the year off knowing that you've got a CUSAC point already, uh, already locked in there, um, by having all of those on file.
Is it adequate if I do that first thing in the morning?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I'll take care of that.
So, I'm going to give you my, I'm going to proselytize on ethics a little bit. Um, so let's talk about what ethics is not. It is not the floor of behavior. It's not the minimum standard of behavior that, that we expect of people. Um, that would be laws, court orders, regulations, right? That's our floor. Uh, likewise, it's not the ceiling. Okay, the ceiling of conduct is our morals, our personal beliefs, and that's going to be different from person to person. A code of ethics is something that helps you navigate the in-between. So what do I mean by that, right? That's like a nice little three bullet slide, you know, it, it sort of ticks off that rule of threes thing, but what do I mean by that? So I'm going to take another step back. Um, what's fascinating in this universe, to me at least, as a school board practitioner, is that teachers are the only certificated, regulated profession that do not have ethics training as part of their professional training. School board members are required to do it, lawyers do it, uh, accountants, psychiatrists, doctors, journalists, social workers, every, almost every other regulated profession has some sort of ethics training as part of their professional training to advance in that profession. Um, teachers do not. It's a little footnote to this presentation that I like to reference because I think it puts in context why the Code of Ethics is important. So as an attorney, what happens if I'm not sure about how to, you know, what to do in a particular situation? Someone comes to me, you know, maybe it's a, a client who wants to, a former client who's got a case against a current client, you know, or something that maybe I'm not sure if it's professionally ethical. I have a place to go. There's the, the, um, you know, the, the, the ethics, the ethical standard, the, um, you know, professional responsibility, you know, rules of conduct that lawyers have to follow. I have a place to go. I know where I can get answers. I can go to the ethics committee. I can ask for an opinion, et cetera. Um, and that is the case with most other professions. So I, I put that in context, number one, because I think we do a disservice to teachers by not giving them some ethical parameters for their profession because there's a lot of difficult situations that they have to navigate. And to illustrate the point that the purpose of the Code of Ethics is to help you navigate difficult situations. Asking a question about whether something is, is consistent with the Code of Ethics doesn't make you unethical. Um, accidentally, you can trip over some of this. This Code of Ethics, I don't think is intuitive. I think that it's, it's inherently situational. It's been defined by the Department of Education for how we want school board members to act, but it's not inherent. So if you don't have instincts about these things, if some of them are confusing or maybe don't make a ton of sense, that's okay. There's no shame in saying that. The reason why we have the Code of Ethics is to sort of put out, like, to, to set a little bell off in your mind when you're confronted with a situation that you don't know what to do. Go to the board attorney, check the Code of Ethics and, and seek guidance on it. So this is intended to be helpful. It's not an indictment. It's not to suggest, you know, that, um, anyone is inherently unethical. This is really supposed to be helpful. So viewing it through that lens, I'm off my soapbox now. What we're going to do is we're going to go through the ten different sections of the Code of Ethics, and I have some case notes that go with, along with each section, but since we're doing this on the, um, the, the rocket, uh, timeframe, I'm going to just talk about one quick case under each section, and then we'll see how far that takes us along. Okay? All right, so Section A, I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Okay? So we're going to uphold all the laws. We're going to do the, or do things the right way. The case note that I have for you under this one is actually pretty straightforward. This is probably the broadest of all the sections. We're going to follow the rules. Inherently, when you break the rules, it tends to fall under other sections as well. So this is kind of the least illustrative case, but this is what we have. This is a, um, a case from West New York, and just for those following along, when you see the case cited as a C and then a number, this is an actual case decided by the School Ethics Commission. If you see the A in front of it, that means it's an advisory opinion. So the School Eth, Ethics Commission, which is the, the body that oversees the Code of Ethics for, uh, the Department of Education for school boards in New Jersey, you can, if you're not sure about how to conduct yourself in a situation, you can ask them for an advisory opinion, and they're actually pretty, uh, pretty helpful in giving those. West New York board member did, was found to be in violation of the code when he attempted to unilaterally issue a board employee a rice notice without seeking board authority or consulting with the board or superintendent. So obviously, board members can't issue rice notices. It's, uh, it's certainly unethical. Um, so that was, that's our illustration for this one, but generally speaking, again, this is sort of the broadest of the subsections of the code. Section B, educational welfare. I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex or social standing, right? This is our North Star. What are we always guided by here? Educational welfare of children. So we're going to skip to my second slide on this. So this is sort of an interesting one. I thought this was the most illustrative here. Um, this is a case out of Livingston. Board member filed an ethics complaint against another board member. Within that ethics complaint, it contained information, confidential information about that other board member's child. So by, uh, and then that board member who filed the ethics charges, um, released that complaint, you know, sort of was, was publicizing it or showed it to other people. Since it had information about a student of the district that was confidential in that, um, even though it was in the context of a, a legal pleading, that was found to be conduct that was not, you know, driven by the educational welfare of children. So that's our case note on subsection B. And by the way, I will, I will convert this to a, a PDF and I'll send it to Matt. If anyone's having some insomnia and wants to sort of go through this in, in granular detail one of these nights. All right, you probably hear, um, this word policymaking, planning and appraisal. I know I find myself often giving that refrain. That is the role of the board. Policymaking, planning and appraisal, high-level decisions. So it's right here codified in, um, uh, in your Code of Ethics. I'll confine my board action to policymaking, planning and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by that. So what are we seeing here? Okay, so, so where, where this gets interesting, um, and, and going back to my thesis here, where some of this stuff is not intuitive and, and you can trip over some of this. The School Ethics Commission put out a public advisory opinion a few years back on volunteering, um, and stated that a board member would be in violation of the code if he regularly volunteered for a school club. We had contact within control over students, personnel, resources and administration. Additionally, the volunteer activities would involve receiving orders from personnel and administrators, and in doing so, by, by virtue of that regular volunteering activity, that board member would fail to confine their actions to policymaking, planning and appraisal. Um, really interesting case. This was someone with very good intentions, someone who I believe had a, um, a spouse who worked in district who it's like maybe the director of the play or something, and this was a board member who wanted to help out with maybe costumes or music, you know, their wife is going to be there, like, just, you know, some, some extra adult hands with some skills that could be helpful. Um, fortunately sought an advisory opinion and someone with all good intentions who just, who wanted to do some good things. Um, the School Ethics Commission determined that, you know, because of your position as a board member, it's too hard to keep those lines, you know, sort of straight and narrow. Uh, and that by exercising control over students, giving orders, taking orders to staff, um, you know, it, it would at least give the appearance that the board member was, uh, was not limiting themself to policymaking, planning and appraisal. So I always find that, uh, interesting, but a good illustration of how again, with all good intentions, you can maybe find yourself not on the right side of some of these. Subsection D, no micromanaging. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. So my case note on this came from Pleasantville, case from probably about a decade ago. Board member tried to direct the superintendent to allow a student to walk in graduation. The superintendent had determined that that student could not walk in graduation. There were some discipline issues, but there were also safety concerns involving threats made either by or toward that student. Law enforcement had their own concerns. So the superintendent, as the administrator of the district, had made that very sound and reasonable decision to not allow that student to participate in graduation ceremonies. And a board member attempted to essentially overrule the superintendent, direct the superintendent to allow that student to participate. Now, obviously, that's micromanaging. Board members don't dictate to the superintendent how to run the district. But what I think is really like a good illustration here is why? Because that board member had no idea of the backstory. That board member didn't know why, didn't know everything that went into the superintendent's decision. So you know, that's, that's why it's just a bad idea. You don't have all that information because you don't administer the schools. So moving on. Subsection E, I will recognize that the authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. So my very favorite slide is coming up next. And if there's anyone else who was a child in the eighties and spent too much time watching cartoons, I'm going to give you a minute to raise your hand and let me know if anyone recognizes this picture. Anybody? I see Rob Christopher. Mr. Christopher, unmute yourself. Tell me what we're looking at.
That would be Voltron.
Yes, sir. That would be Voltron. What do you know about Voltron?
The sum is greater than its part.
That is exactly correct. That's why we call subsection E the Voltron Principle. Because when Voltron is broken down into its individual parts, they're just these weird little space kitties. Okay? They don't do anything, but when they assemble, they are Voltron. Okay, so much like Voltron, individually, none of you are empowered to do anything on your own. You have to be assembled. So that is my best attempt at making ethics a little bit less dry and a little bit more fun for those of us who grew up in the eighties. So thank you, Mr. Christopher. You get an A plus for tonight. So anyway, that is subsection E, the Voltron Principle. And our, so there's a relatively recent case that I chose to illustrate this point. So so go, so you can't take any person, you can't make any personal promises or take private action that could compromise the board. That's where we're seeing a lot of case law in this area is people's personal social media activities. There've been a couple cases about that, and this one was particularly, particularly the the underlying case here is particularly interesting. So there was a board member who who shared, it wasn't even like an original post, shared with comment rather, some really inflammatory and violent social media posts about a Muslim politician. Again, it was on someone's personal Facebook page. It wasn't, you know, a board page. It wasn't Adam at a public meeting or anything like that. It was just someone kind of spouting off in their personal life about their personal beliefs. And they were so troubling these posts that the School Ethics Commission, after the ethics charges were filed, actually determined that it was a violation of the code. We don't lose our First Amendment rights when we're elected as board members. However, you can't ever completely take that hat off, I think, is the message here. And by by putting something that vitriolic out there that really has the potential to have this chilling effect on people coming and interacting with the board, number one, and number two, alienating potentially a portion of your population. So I think it's just a good reminder, like some of these other cases under here are pretty interesting, board members gone wild kind of thing. But you know, this was particularly interesting, you know, in that it was completely, completely private action, you know, is this person's just personal Facebook page, but visible to enough people that it became something that compromised the board in the view of the SEC. So moving on to subsection F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. Seems pretty straightforward. Case note that I chose under here. So this was an advisory opinion. Again, someone asked before they acted, always a big fan of that. It was a newly elected board member who owned and operated a business who historically had partnered with the local ed foundation to do some sort of hoagie night or car wash or some sort of fundraiser where the profits were then split 50-50 between the business and the ed foundation. Really nice thing for someone in the community to do. However, once that person became a board member, that was no longer appropriate to do because it could be viewed. And in fact, that person was sort of receiving some personal gain. Although it pre-existed the board members' membership, although there was no intention of like, hey, I'm a board member now. I'm really going to cash in on that. Nonetheless, it did create this, it created this impression. So number one, always ask before you act. You might be surprised. And number two, just another another moment where someone with good intentions had an idea that would have been in violation of the code. So going back to my thesis that we are not, this is not intuitive here. Subsection G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. So I think confidentiality is something that's pretty well drilled into to you as a board member. You know, the other thing that I like to highlight in this one is accurate information. It's it's one of the reasons why it's a little bit dangerous to engage in Facebook as a board member because sometimes it's it's hard to be giving complete and accurate information. But providing accurate information is is one of your obligations here. And I'm actually going to do two case notes under this one. So so this was a case from East Greenwich. This is a situation where a member of the community was displeased with something the superintendent had done, had emailed the superintendent and the board, you know, asking about, you know, how was this complaint going to be addressed? And a board member hit reply all without taking the community member off. And, you know, put in some substance in that email about what was discussed in a prior executive session. So it was this, this person was only reprimanded, which is the lowest, the second lowest penalty really that you can receive from the SEC. Censure is is more in line with what the SEC does for confidentiality violations, but since this one was pretty clearly inadvertent, it was only a reprimand. But nonetheless, SEC still took action and saw fit to to reprimand this person. The, there was another case that I'll mention just real briefly that came up pretty recently in in the context of an election, a board member who was up for reelection shared a Facebook post from somebody else commenting on the other candidates who were running against that person. The substance of the post suggested that that one of the other candidates had worked at, had worked in the district that she was running for the board of and had been essentially removed for misconduct. So that turned out to be untrue, but by virtue of sharing that information, which by the way, should have been confidential anyway, if it was true. The, and I think I talk about that under a different subsection, but the School Ethics Commission did note that, you know, that was sharing inaccurate information, even though it was information that shouldn't have been shared at all. You're going to share it. It should at least be accurate, was was sort of the point they were making. But again, these sort of social media cases are coming up. Subsection H is always the superintendent's favorite. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. As you all know, the board's, the board's ability, the authority in the realm of personnel is fairly limited. All you can do is thumbs up, thumbs down on the superintendent's recommendation, except for very limited circumstances. So however, with that said, it has long, long been the case that simply by not voting in accordance with the superintendent's recommendation, that in and of itself is not a violation of the code. So board members, board members' duties here were just to consider the chief school administrator's recommendation and take action on it and dismiss those that are arbitrary or capricious, which, you know, are pretty few and and far between. So although it's your obligation to consider it, you are not ethically bound to necessarily agree with all of the recommendations. All right. Subsection I, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. So actually, you know, let me back up one. Oh, here it is. Okay. So this was a, you know, this one sort of convoluted in the way that it's in the way that it was sort of blurred. But basically, what happened was this. A board member was speaking with a district employee who was not the superintendent and basically had this little kind of hypothetical conversation like, so, you know, if the superintendent's job opened up, you know, would you go for it? You know, would you be interested in that? Something, and I don't, I don't know anything about the case. I don't know anything about the the people involved. Without knowing that, that could be a board member who was looking to push out a superintendent, or that could have been someone knowing that their superintendent was getting ready to retire and, you know, trying to see what sort of internal candidates there would be. Regardless, that was determined to be inappropriate and undermined the superintendent, you know, in that asking this subordinate if they would want that job, and also there was no vacancy to fill. So just sort of an interesting one that, you know, the, without knowing the circumstances on the ground, you know, could have, could have been a couple of things happening behind the scenes there. But nonetheless, we we take the principle from it. This one above is always just kind of fun. Like, I don't know what this person was thinking. You know, it was a board member who posted on their Facebook page. Now, if we can only do something about our local terrorists that destroy dreams and burn futures, and that that caption was posted with a link to the picture of the superintendent. So it's just, it's some little, little colorful, but I don't know what that person was thinking. So but definitely don't do that. So this was the case that I was just talking about a, this was from from Neptune. The board member violated the code and was reprimanded for sharing a post on her personal Facebook page that contained false allegations of misconduct about a staff member. It was a substitute who was running against the board member for a seat on the board by sharing inaccurate information. The board member failed to support district personnel and shared incorrect information that actually harmed that person. The person running for the board was a sub or was a former sub and, you know, created some some reputation, a cloud of suspicion around that person that wasn't based in fact. So I knew I had it in here somewhere. And here we are. We are at the final subsection here of our code. Section J, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution. So this is the, this is where I tell you, let yourselves off the hook. You don't have to solve all the problems. Your job is to follow the chain of command and point someone in the direction of solution. So two cases under here to to mention very similar. Board members in the top, this one case, C2505, violated the code by going to the principal directly with the parent complaint rather than referring it to the superintendent. And in the Hillside case, the board member received letters and didn't provide them to the superintendent because he did not like the superintendent's management of the issues raised in the letters. Instead, that board member went to other administrators. So the moral of the story is from your seat as a board member, you always take that to the superintendent. Now, someone asked me a very good question last night, which is that can you direct members of the public to go to the principal or, you know, whatever the proper chain of command is? Absolutely. That's absolutely fine. You can always, always encourage them to follow the chain of command to do your duty as a board member. If you want to show constituents that you are following up, your job is to then refer to the superintendent. And you may follow up with the person who reached out to you and say, hey, I sent your, your information and your issued superintendent. You know, someone will be in contact with you soon. But what you don't have to do is solve problems. So you can, you know, you can in good conscience, let yourselves off the hook that it's not your job to solve them, just to make sure they get to the right people. So I think that brings us to about 24 minutes, right? We started at 6:21. I I can keep going. I'll, I'll, I'll show you what's in the rest of the presentation without bogging you down with it because I know you guys have business to attend to. So as it pertains to negotiations, there's some relevance to the how we define immediate family members, relatives, and others. So I like this chart just as a lawyer, like it kind of brings order to a sort of sticky definition. And then we talk about, you know, where where different relationships with teachers in district and out of district may present conflicts for purposes of negotiations. So we reference some advisory opinions and just some information about conflicts. And then I go through a couple of cases. You know, the interesting thing about this one is that the School Ethics Opinion issued, the School Ethics Commission issued an advisory opinion that said where a board member's spouse was employed, employed as a substitute in district. And by employed, I mean employed directly by the Board of Education, annual list of subs that created a conflict for that board member and voting on anyone up the chain of command from someone who could potentially supervise their spouse. However, the flip side of that is that there was sort of a you know, sort of contradictory advisory opinion. The distinction being the family member who was a substitute was working for one of the substitute staffing companies wasn't employed directly in district. So again, we're seeing some like tiny nuances here that I don't think are completely intuitive. The School Ethics Commission surprises me all the time. Doctrine of necessity, something that sounds a lot cooler than it is. Hopefully, you never have to confront it, but that only happens when more than a board's, more than the board's quorum is conflicted from acting on an issue, and then there are steps that you can follow that afford a lot of transparency about those conflicts and then ultimately allow the full board to ask, to act. Some more talk about volunteering. School Ethics Commission has pulled back a little bit on the prohibition volunteering. They've kind of clarified clarified that they're looking to the degree of involvement as well as the degree to which they have, the board member would have authority over staff or students. So when it comes to volunteering, if you're not sure, just ask. I mean, that's, that's generally if there's one message I can send you home with, other than Voltron is really cool. It's if you're not sure, just ask. It's, you know, it's easy enough for us to get these answers, and then you can always ask for an advisory opinion. But it's always better to have the conversation. That's why we have the Code of Ethics. Sometimes the answer is straightforward. Sometimes it's not. Interesting little con contrast with the volunteering line of advisory opinions. There was a case, an advisory opinion issued about a board member who was a bus driver who worked for a bus company that serviced that particular district. Part of me thinks that the School Ethics Commission is aware of the difficulties in finding bus drivers and transportation routes generally, and they just were trying not to create any problems. However, that that board member in their context as a bus driver did have supervisory authority over students. And since it was paid employment, it seems like the School Ethics Commission was okay with that because they were employed by an outside staffing agency. Again, a distinction that I find a little bit weird. But nonetheless, that's, that's why we look to them for the authority because these answers are not always clear. And this would have been my final slide. Anyway, this is just the no lone wolf slide. This was a case that involved a board member who had some procedural concerns about the approval of a superintendent's contract and wanted to file a petition with the commissioner seeking some sort of declaration of validity of the process. The rest of the board was not in support of it. Board attorney told the board member they couldn't. But the board member went and filed anyway. So the reason I like to pull this case is just that I like this quote at the end. I think it really brings a lot of things into focus in terms of your limitation, your limitations as an individual board member. So if a lone board member is unable to convince his or her fellow board members of his or her position, then the board members' recourse is to address the issue in public or to vote against a resolution or action that they may disagree with. The recourse is not for board members to take matters into their own hands and to file a public proceeding against other members of the board. So your voice is your vote. Do you think it's sort of a, a nice, a nice note to end on here in terms of, you know, all of the concepts that we have discussed? So that is it. Questions, thoughts, concerns, discussions? I see one question. That was just a shout out for the Voltron reference. I appreciate that. It's my favorite part of this whole.
Jean has a question?
Yeah, I I love the Voltron reference, even though I didn't quite get it because I'm just a little bit before that. But question for you about arbitrary and capricious. Can you give us an example? It's a pretty high bar, right?
Yeah. So what constitutes arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable? So I would say no basis in fact. If you find, if you, right, or the superintendent finds themselves struggling to articulate why you are, why a recommendation is being made, that's probably a good sign. You know, I think that the, it certainly can't be, you know, I don't know. I don't like the way they look, you know, right? I mean, like, like, it can't be anything like, like, those are really clear ones. It's a high bar to meet, though. So it really has to be without reason, without explanation. When, and and very few and far between are our cases are decisions or recommendations determined to be arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. And usually there's like some sort of like, I don't know, political driver to it, like that's where you kind of see some of those cases shake out. More often, though, it is a board's determination that ends up being arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable when it goes against the superintendent's recommendation. If there's really clear articulable reasons for the superintendent's recommendation. If there's really clear articulable reasons for the superintendent's recommendation and, and the board votes against it without being able to articulate why. In the context of non-renewals, I don't know if that's what you're thinking, but I know that, um, there is some case law that suggests like the superintendent might have great reasons to recommend someone for renewal. However, board members can draw on, you know, feedback from the community, what they know, their personal experiences. So even though they're maybe like by some measure less important than the, the measures that the superintendent might be using, that doesn't mean they're arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable. They're articulable. So that's, that's kind of what I would say is how I would call it, like some basis in fact, and you got to be able to articulate it.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
No, I think that's it Alicia. So you, you will email, um, the slide deck to Matt so that we could all look at it. It's very interesting reading. So thank you very much.
Thank you for saying that's interesting. I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, very, very interesting. Um, so thank you. And, and if it's okay, we'll move on.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for joining us. We really appreciate it. It was great. Um, bye bye. Uh, so now I'll, um, turn the floor over to Dr. Kelly if she has, um, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I just wanted to congratulate, uh, once again, those board members that are being sworn in tonight. And I look forward to working, uh, with, uh, the new board leadership. And would like to also just really thank, uh, our outgoing president, uh, Beth Baron. Uh, I still vividly remember that phone call that I got in Oak Park, uh, where I screamed in your ear. Uh, it has been an honor and a pleasure, uh, to serve with you. And, uh, as Daphna already said, I would like to also welcome Kathy Foster and Rebecca Gold, uh, to the team. Uh, we look forward to working with you. I won't really, um, share too much more. And, uh, thank you again, uh, to all of the staff who've been working incredibly hard, uh, this week. Um, and also like to publicly acknowledge and thank our public health director and also the district's physician for their partnership and support, uh, as we are trying to keep our students, uh, in person, uh, during this pandemic.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Um, so we'll move on now. I, I, I've learned a lot by watching Beth. So, uh, if I go too fast, just slow me down. But we'll go with, um, agenda item F, organization of the board, um, annual meeting schedule. Just stop me if you have any questions or concerns. Policy manual and bylaws, student code of conduct, newspapers for legal advertisements, uh, designation of depositories.
Sorry, but the newspaper one?
So this is an annual, um, uh, uh, informational appointment. This is who we, um, use for, uh, hiring. And Matt, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Well, no, my question, it's, I'm, I'm fine with it. I was just wondering, why don't we also list some of the online groups we use?
Well, number four, F four legal advertisements is required, uh, two papers. So we, we announce which two papers, um, for, for postings, for open public meeting act every time. You know, if we call an impromptu, like after this meeting, we have the, uh, F one annual meeting schedule, we'll send it to both those official papers.
Well, that was my question because Princeton Packet is small. I was curious why, and I was also curious why we used the Trenton Times.
It's by statute. The, uh, the newspapers are by statute. So it's very old. It's got to be a paper printed thing.
It is something we can look at, uh, the Princeton Packet being a weekly, uh, I brought that up on occasion, does present, um, some, um.
I was curious why we didn't do town topics because that literally, you know, that goes to every household where Princeton Packet doesn't.
I think it's probably a carryover. Princeton Packet at one time may have been more, uh, prevalent. But a, but a week, a weekly is not ideal. So we can, we can always address that going forward.
I didn't know if you had to do a paper versus online. I was just, I didn't.
Old school, yes.
Yeah, it has to be a paper, but we can choose the paper. Is that right, Matt?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so number five, legal advertisements for hiring of staff. Number six, designation of depositories. Number seven, designation of depository student activity funds. Number eight, petty cash. Number nine, authorization to make transfers. Number 10, authorization to pay bills. Number 11, solicitation of bids. Uh, number 12, authori- authorization to procure goods and services through state contracts and consortiums. Number 13, professional services, uh, and E U S insurance brokers, general business, twenty twenty two. Number 14, bid and quote threshold authorization.
Sorry, the, uh, thirteen was an action item.
Oh, thirteen is an action. How would I know that, Matt? Oh, it says action. Got it. Yep, thank you. Uh, fourteen bid and quote threshold authorization. Fifteen district organization and sixteen hiring in between board meetings. So any questions? Okay. Adoption of the minutes for, of December fourteenth. Uh, this is an action item.
Just a question. If, if it is an action item, then I think we vote on it at the time.
Yep, we'll do, if you, if you may, uh, Daphna, we'll do thirteen first. F thirteen first, the, um, professional service.
Are we going to vote before public comment? So I had sent you a note. I'm not sure if you saw it, um, because there had been an earlier public comment. Can we do the action item and then?
You, you as presiding officer can absolutely open this, open up public comment. I mean, these are generally reorganizational type. This part. So I, I would did move the public comment up ahead to non-reorg issues, but you can absolutely, uh, as board president, open this up. If you wanted to have a public comment, these are general reorganization, uh, type things.
Well, just, that's fine. We'll leave it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, so then we need, um, we need a motion for F thirteen. Is that right, Matt?
That's correct.
Beth, second. Debbie? Matt, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Upstain.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Okay. And then could I have, um, a vote for the consent agenda?
Do the minute, uh, sorry, Daphna.
What?
Minutes, uh, G one.
Okay, G one? Okay, can I get a motion? Brian, second. Beth?
Brian, Beth.
And would you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Uh, Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Rob. Called it before I, Rob Christopher was, uh,
I'll abstain as well.
As well. Motion passes. Now I've, so it's probably messed up if you didn't refresh the online because, uh, Daphna had pointed out about the public comment ahead of non-reorg items. So now, uh, there is a public comment section, uh, that I had at your request.
Thank you. Let me see. I just got kicked out of the agenda thing, I think. Oh, here I am. Okay. So we're adding, uh, okay. So we are going to open it up for our public comment. Um, you're free to ask, speak about anything, agenda items, uh, non-agenda items. We ask that you please keep it respectful. Uh, we're not allowed to talk about or comment on personnel or any other, um, personnel issues. Um, so please be respectful of the other people who might have, um, want to comment. Um, so Mr. Bolden, please, um, proceed.
Jen, uh, Jen Kohan, Jennifer Kohan?
Hi there. Jennifer Kohan, forty six Henry Avenue. I had two comments. Um, I have actually been the recipient of legal correspondence, um, from Princeton Public Schools once under Steve Cochran with Andrea Spalla as president and under Barry Galasso. Dr. Galasso was Beth Baron as president. And, um, it was related to my activities as an activist parent in the district. I just want to say that I think it's a little disappointing that we were not allowed to ask our district attorney about, um, parameters for this regard to her work and who approves it and what the qualifications are for that. And additionally, there are actually multiple situations that come up where the chain of command involves the chain of command. So I think it's really important that parents know if they cannot involve their principal because their principal is part of a, an issue where they can go and that information needs to be multilingual. And that's it. So congratulations to all members of the board and thank you for your hard work and to all administration. These are super intense times and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Karen Callahan?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Karen Callahan and I'm a resident of Cranberry. Um, since January is Board Recognition Month, I'd like to thank the board for your service to our students and to the district. My comment and question this evening is, I would like to better understand why Mr. Christopher was not permitted to participate in the election of board president and vice president this evening. The terms of the send receive agreement states that the Cranberry representative who sits on Princeton Board of Education shall have all the rights and privileges extended to such persons in accordance with NJSA eighteen A thirty dash eight point one. Specifically, that statute states in section I, any matter concerning governance of this receiving district of Board of Education, including but not limited to the selection of board president and vice president. Previous board members from Cranberry have participated in this election. Um, and it's reflected in your minutes. So I was just a little confused as to why Mr. Christopher was not permitted this evening. Thank you.
If, if the, uh, board president, we, we generally don't do Q and A, but in this case, I'd like to just say something that, you know.
Thank you.
Was, uh, texting, uh, Mr. Christopher back and forth about that. So I, I had gone back in previous meetings. The way the agenda was shown, uh, was strange in the past, uh, five meetings. We have a roll call where we don't list the Cranberry member. Then we go through the election of the officer. So there was no intention to exclude Cranberry at all. Uh, but in fact, you are correct that the votes were recorded by Cranberry's member, uh, formerly Evelyn Sponder, then Peter Katz. So, uh, I am at, uh, and I had, uh, told Mr. Christopher, I will figure out, uh, where the mistake had happened. Whether it was a procedural, uh, mistake with the software where when they click on the roll call, they click everyone, the vote would, you know, or if I made a mistake and excluded, uh, Mr. Christopher. So, um, in the, uh, you know, in the sense of just keeping things moving, uh, what I said was I'll check with the attorney. I was looking at the bylaws also and was slightly confused. I don't know why the agendas were set up like that in the past. And, uh, if I made an error, there was no, um, intentional a- at all, um, intention, I should say, to exclude Cranberry. So, but I will figure out with our attorney and, uh, if, where the mistake was. It was just a procedural mistake in the past and the way they did the agenda. Because if you have a roll call and then you had the, uh, nominations, et cetera. So it was, it was, uh, confusing, but we will, uh, correct that, uh, by the next board meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
No offense taken, Matt.
I understand it and I was, yes. So I put, I think I said.
I have a quick question. Matt, procedurally, since we voted one way and we're going to check, should we vote the other way now, including Rob? And so we've got both on the record or is that not necessary?
I mean, I'm not an attorney. I know we have five attorneys, I believe, on the board right now, but it's, it's a little, uh, confusing. I, I don't think that, so the vote wouldn't change, uh, but we will, for the record, absolutely correct. I'll figure out where the mistake happened, whether it was my mistake, uh, or in the past, if the agendas weren't set up right. But i- in my mind, the roll call should have included Mr. Christopher in the beginning. And, you know, if he's not part of the roll call, but the votes were recorded in the past by Cranberry. So, uh, we'll, we'll figure it out and we will correct for the record, uh, on the January eighteenth board. I think that's the best way to handle it for everyone.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Matt, are there any more questions?
Thank you, Ms. Callahan.
Are there any more public, um?
There are, there are no other questions at this time.
Okay, great. So we'll now move on to, um, agenda item I, which is personnel. Um, we have the central administrator contracts as I one, and we have a transportation transportation aid salary increase as I two. Um, any questions? From anyone? Okay, so, um, we can move to the consent vote. Can I get a motion, please? Um, Jean, uh, second. Betsy? Mr. Bolden, would you call the role, please?
Absolutely. Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Same.
Rob Christopher?
Sorry, struggling with my mute button. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Um, does, I think that, uh, brings us to the end of our, um, public session tonight. Can I have a motion to go into closed session? And Mr. Bolden, do you need to read something first?
I need to, I will read the motion, uh, resolved that the Board of Education approved the closed session resolution, whereas NJSA ten four twelve allows for a public body to go into closed session during a public meeting. And whereas the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools has the even necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain matters which are exempted from the public. And whereas the minutes of the closed session will be released when the need for confidentiality in accordance with NJSA ten four twelve no longer applies. And whereas the regular meeting of this Board of Education, will, uh, adjourn, uh, with no action taken. And the reason for going into closed session, uh, is to discuss negotiations and personnel. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Princeton Public Schools will go into closed session for the following reasons as outlined, uh, as just mentioned, negotiate to discuss negotiations and personnel matters.
Okay. So do we need a roll call on that or?
Yep.
We do. Okay. So did I get, um, a motion? Uh, Debbie, second? Uh, Betsy? Okay. Um, Mr. Bolden, would you call the role, please?
Beth Baron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Betsy Bagley?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Jean Durbin?
Yes.
Mara Franceschi?
Yes.
Rob Christopher?
Yeah.
Uh, motion passes.
Okay. Um, so thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Again, happy new year. Um, our next meeting is on, um, January eighteenth, uh, at seven thirty. Our public session begins at seven thirty. So we look forward to seeing you then. Have a good night. Bye bye.
Night.
Good night.
Good night, thanks.
Thank you.